March 17, 2020. May we all stand for the place? One moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the record reflects those who are present. I will call the roll. Village Attorney Seraphin.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman LaFredo.
Present.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Verge.
Mayor Wagler.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Okay, today we'll start with our presentations. We'll start with a presentation by the Historic Properties Discovery Database by the Historic Preservation Board.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. Wesley Castellanos, I'm the Chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. Mr. Benton, we basically want to say we want to thank you for allowing us to present today because what we have been doing in the historic preservations, we've been doing some research with database, including help with Travis, with the Planning and Zoning Director. So the reason for our presentation today is that we've been doing some research, especially with Patricia Bonaduce, who's beside me, who just became a member of the board. And what we've been doing lately is we've been doing a lot of research. She's been looking at every property. And what she wants to do is express to you today that the Historic Preservation Board is going to be, is a board that's going to be looked at to preserve the structures that we have in Miami Shores, that the village is going to be, is going to have this beautiful village is what we're trying to achieve with this research that we're doing. So I want to present to you Patricia Bonaduce for the research that she's been doing with this project. So go ahead, Patricia.
Good evening. I did this brief PowerPoint to do it as faster as possible today, even if it's a lot of information right now. What we're doing is that once we get to the board, the first thing you look as a member is what are the properties that are already first national registered? And that's public records. You go online and boom, you have, there were only 25 houses. And just three months ago, we added, where they added Barry University. So so far, we have in the village 26 properties national listed in the National Register. Then we moved forward, okay, what are the ones that are locally designated? And it was like, so far, the village officially has recognized 44 properties. And we're still working with Isabella, who she's the curator of public records, as you know. And she's been helping me a lot to search all the properties need to have a covenant registered in Miami-Dade County. So this database is still in a work in progress. So far, 27 are already registered, and the remaining 17 are being searched so far. So after this, we have already public and locally, that's the only data we had. So we start looking, okay, what we do from now, from here, how will we move forward? Where are the list of Shoreland Company properties or all the historic properties? And there was no database, okay? So the only thing we had is houses registers, the last one was in 1988. And locally, the last one was in 198. So why in 22 and 32 years, nothing happened? So my theory was because we don't have, we didn't have a database. So as a real estate broker, I know that it's easy to get this when you go on miamidade.gov and click in one by one. So I did this and today with my colleagues here from the Historic Board, we want to make this officially donation to the whole village and future generations to come. Nobody has, there is no city in all Miami-Dade or three county area that has this information. This accurate. It was done click by click. It's really, really accurate. So we found them all. We found all the Shoreland houses. We found all the houses built in the 20s, all the houses in the 30s. So now we have information to work with. So we had with this, once you put everything in Excel spreadsheet, you have all this database. You have it in your pamphlets, okay? Only 4% was built with Shoreland and the rest, you know, during the year, 75% in the 40s and 50s. Now we have work to do, a lot, in the years to come. Moving forward, we found all the houses in Shoreland, 117. They're already documented and listed in your folders. And I just put it in a map so people will just, you know, see it immediately. Then houses from the 30s, as easy as that, from the database, you can, we can do everything we can do now. Even we created the three streets that have more historic homes, 102nd, 101st, and 96th. And we created walking tours. We didn't have that. So now it's even a tool for promoting the architecture and history in Miami Shores. So with that being said, we donated this one a couple of weeks ago to the library. And they were so enthusiastic about this work. And they remind us that the month of May is National Historic Preservation Month in the United States. So what a better way to, Mary Benton was the one who just proposed to have this exhibit at the library. And now we're putting together everything with all this database, creating great banners and posters and whatever we want to do it on the library. And this could be like the first annual exhibit celebrating National Historic Preservation Month in Miami Shores. So we're here having this donation public. This is a wonderful valuable database. And to personally myself, I would like, you know, the support of the council to like, or the Historic Board to like have this week-long or month-long exhibit that is going to create the great enthusiasm in the village and the city, the whole of Miami to have this exhibition promoting what we do. Yes.
May I ask a question? Would you like a week-long exhibit and assuming maybe towards the end of May, when maybe the situation has improved here with a reception in the library like the Friday night, would that be something you would be interested in doing?
Well, this with the coronavirus.
Assuming the virus.
I know. The coronavirus situation just showed up. This was done, you know, since December, January, we were working with. So let's see how the things are evolving. And this is just, you know, a planning idea that could be moved forward as the situation would be, you know, improving. But this was the main idea with the whole Historic Board. So we're so excited right now. Now we have, we all are like, now we have, we have no time with all the database that we can be working with.
Any questions with Mr.?
I wanted to thank you. One of the things, because I was actually on the council in 1998, and one of the things I'm concerned about, although things may be changing rapidly, is there might, I was worried about a move to tear down or alter irreparably to their detriment, the historic homes. So I commend you for this effort on your behalf for the database. Is it possible to somehow incorporate that into the village website? Is that possible or is that technically unfeasible?
Well, we're working on, if I may, we're working on designation, historic designation. So there are structures that are not locally designated. They are nationally designated. So there's only a few limited amount on the conversation that we had separately at the Union Day.
Right.
Yes, the answer is yes. We're trying to work with a method that will preserve the architecture of the homes that we are keeping in Miami Shores. So the answer is yes, we are working on it. There is a local, we worked on the paperwork for the designation. So yes.
The idea, you know, the main idea was to like motivate people with this exhibit. People will be interested. And then when we go out inviting houses to get designated, then they already know what we're working about. And maybe they're more enthusiastic than right now. I think things are not, you know, this warm-up like after we do this public.
First of all, thank you so very much for all the hard work that you did. That click one-on-one is something that we are, we can all enjoy the fruits of your labor and have this statement.
Thank you.
That is really priceless for our village. And I thank you very much. And also I recognize, because she's very quiet, Michelle Headley, who's also a member of the Historic Preservation Board.
Yes.
You don't have to stand up. I just, I want to say her name. And I got this sense when this board was appointed that there was just a lot of energy there. And I'm so thrilled to know that you're working so hard for our village and for historic preservation.
Thank you so much.
It's really great. And one other thing I'd like to mention is that I have had some conversations about Miami Shores Elementary School. It did come up a few months ago at a council meeting that someone mentioned that they thought it was historically designated, but the clerk has mentioned that it does not appear. So I'm hoping that that question will be resolved a little better, that there's some way to, maybe if it doesn't get national recognition, that it would have some kind of local preservation idea. There will be a big capital campaign, so you'll be seeing construction at Miami Shores Elementary. And I wanted to dig a little deeper into that topic.
Thank you.
I have a question. Am I allowed to ask a question? No, sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say something. Thank you. So I do want to congratulate you on putting this together. I know it was a labor of love, and I know it took you a very long time to put these together. And I really appreciate it, specifically because I'm a homeowner of two historic homes here in Miami Shores Village. And I see they're both in here. So I have an affection for older homes, even though it's going to be the death of me. But it's a wonderful thing that we would collect this and what you said earlier, for the future of our community and for the little ones to see what's here. And then gifting it to the library and to the village, I think it's a wonderful idea. I love the idea of the exhibition. So if we can go forward as planned, that'd be great. And I plan to be there. Thank you so much to all of you who did this hard work. This is a big deal. Thank you for our community.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming out and making this presentation. It means a lot. Thank you.
Item 6A, approval of the March 3, 2020 Village Council Meeting Minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman LaFredo?
Yeah, just as a amount of courtesy, would it be possible to incorporate my comments into the meeting minutes? In other words, just attach them?
So noted, Councilman.
Yeah, I'll move approval on that basis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Oh, we missed public comment.
Oh, we skipped public comment, didn't we?
We didn't miss a remark.
That's okay. That's okay. At this time, we'll have public comments. Anyone wishing to make public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I have some questions. Okay, can I have a second? Can you copy? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Maria Coyne. I live at 67 Northeast 94th Street, Miami Shores, Florida. On February 27, my dog, I was walking three of my dogs. One of them was mauled and attacked and killed by a pit bull that resides in the shores as well. Five weeks prior, this dog had also been involved in another incident that involved a man and involved another dog. That man sustained about $7,000 to $8,000 worth of medical bills at Mount Sinai. As I went through the process of going to my vets and taking, meeting with Animal Services, Animal Services was called to the scene of the crime. The police were there for Miami Shores Village, who were outstanding. And as I've gone through this process, I've learned a few things. So I've printed out the Miami-Dade statutes and then dangerous dog registration. So what I've learned and what I'm petitioning are two things. First, what I learned was that the city, Miami-Dade Animal Services, really is, doesn't have a lot of power in terms of what they can actually do with the dog. I think most of us think that when something like this happens, the dog is euthanized, and that is not the case. They are deemed under investigation. The dog normally should have been taken away and quarantined for 10 days, and that did not happen. They requested that the dog be quarantined on the first offense. Clearly, that didn't happen. And on the second offense. So now I don't know what's the status with the dog. Animal Services, that happened to me on a Thursday. Animal Service, I went into Animal Services. Now, one of the glitches in their system is that they do not align. So one team member is issuing citations and fines and deeming a dog dangerous. And the other team members at Animal Services are not communicating to one another. So their caseload is overworked. There's not enough men and women in the field to do this properly. So that's one thing that I learned. When I went down there on Monday morning, had I not gone down there, this caseworker that was originally appointed to work on the first offense, the first attack, didn't know there was a second attack that resulted in the death of my dog. So right there was like a major flaw. The dog is clearly a pit bull. I have pictures of the dog. And they make it very, Miami Animal Services makes it very difficult to, you can all keep that on the file if you care to. So they make it very difficult because they are infusing these dogs back into the system. So they mislabel the dogs when they're adopting the dogs out. That is clearly a pit bull. I've had three vets look at it, Dr. McCoy, Dr. Spencer Goldstein, and Dr. Camo that treated my dog, and they all said that's a pit. Whether the city deems it a pit would require a DNA test and furthermore, follow-up that Animal Services just cannot do. So on the statute, it says on the opening line, "The term 'pit bull' is used within this article shall reference any dog which exhibits those characteristics, those distinguishing characteristics." There's no which way about it, that dog is a pit. Furthermore, on this statute 15-17.2, confinement of pit bull dogs. So that didn't happen either. The burden is now on our neighbor who lives in the shores to create a pen for her dog. So once this dog is deemed on Wednesday of this week, tomorrow, that this dog is a dangerous dog, the city just fines her additional fines, fines the family additional fines that they now have a dangerous dog. So what I want to petition and ask, I know you're a lawyer, I believe you may be an attorney, I know for certain, you're an attorney. Okay. Are we, as a community, chock full of young children? And the thing with a dog that's dangerous, you don't know what it's going to set off. So you don't know if a child learning how to walk kind of stumbles down and this thing comes up behind it, and there's another mauling that happens. So for our own safety, can the city on our website post dogs in the community that have addresses that have been deemed by the city, which is public record, to be dangerous? Secondly, the burden again is on, in my case, we have an irresponsible owner who owes quite a bit of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, to Miami Shores Village. And their house is also now under bankruptcy. So can we post that address as safe for the past two years so that we can contain the situation of young people, young people, young mothers, children, so forth, that are in a neighborhood that does have a dangerous dog, that is capable of running out and doing another attack? And if we, since Miami Animal Dade Services, it's a tongue-twister for saying all the time.
Miami Dade Animal Services.
Thank you. There you go. Because they do not give signs to these residents that have these dangerous dogs, is that something that Miami Shores Village could fine or impose as a citation on the resident? So those are my two requests. And I think that if there's any background legwork that needs to be done, or if you all want to form a committee, I would be happy to sit on that committee and donate my time. Okay?
I'm good. I have something stuck in my throat, guys. I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Coyne. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have to make a public statement. Ms. Coyne consulted me professionally last week. She did not engage my services, but she's considering engaging my services. And I want to make sure that I don't have to recuse myself both from that representation and from sitting on the council about it. But I want it to be known that she did consult with me. And.
Right now, there's nothing before you. It's just public comment.
Okay, but I wanted to put that out there.
Understood.
I haven't been retained, but I just want, she did consult with me. Her dog was killed by this other dog.
Understood. We'll remember that going forward.
So those are my two requests, if that's at all possible. It's public record, so I don't know if there's a way to privacy there or not. But that would, I think, put us on the path of safety in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you closed public comment?
Ah, there, is there any more public comment this evening? There being no more public comment, public comment is closed. Thank you.
Item 7A, ordinance of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida relating to zoning, Appendix A, amending Article 5, Division 4, Area Regulations, Section 518. Fences, walls, and hedges providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and effective date. Staff on this item is the Planning and Zoning Director. And there, this is a public hearing.
I'll start with you and.
Hi, good evening, Travis Kendall. Do you need further second?
I'm fine.
I know. Anyway, so this item, in front of you is the second reading. It deals specifically with the fencing on commercial properties, specifically for those identified during the period of time from when a building is demolished to when a new building is constructed. It allows for a temporary chain link fence to be either black or green vinyl at the location. There is no changes in the ordinance. Specifically, there was that one section that we removed the two lines where it was repetitive. But other than that, there are no changes between first and second. I haven't had any negative feedback or comments that have been provided to me from any residents between first, sixth, and ninth or so. Happy to answer any questions if there are some.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any public comments? Okay. Comments from the council?
Just a question. Was that addition of 102nd Street to 150th Street, an addition that was in part of this amendment, or was it just from previous?
That was from previous. There's no specific section that identifies geographical area.
Okay, fine. I'll move approval.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Item AA, resolution of the Miami Shores Village Council authorizing the village manager to execute the federally funded subaward and grant agreement number H0467. Documents sent to administer the grant and provide for an effective date. Staff on this item is the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Good evening. I previously advised you that the village was successful in receiving a drainage grant behind the former Kmart area, also known as the Shores Estates subdivision. The village award for Phase 1, which is the design and permitting, is for $168,750. And in order for me to sign that, I needed this resolution authorizes me to sign the documents. So it's routine housekeeping item. However, I need to include that with a grant.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have any comments from the council?
Madam Mayor, I just, since we're going over this again, I really wanted to mention how grateful I am to the staff for having reached this point in the grant process. It really is an amazing boost to the Shores Estates community. I know they're appreciative of it. And it is a great start for our vulnerability plans.
Amen.
Agreed. So do I have a motion?
I'll move the motion, I mean, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
We have, I'm not sure, I would like to know, first of all, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, do I have an updated copy of the agenda? Is there any additions here that I'm not familiar with before we go into our discussion items?
I was going to say something about that if you're headed where I think you're headed.
Yes.
If I can.
Yes, please.
It's no news to anyone here that we're going through a series of emergencies relating to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic and working with staff and the mayor. The mayor is either signed or is about to sign a local declaration of emergency for Miami Shores, basically laying the groundwork for whatever tough decisions need to be made going forward, potentially at a time when you all can't be meeting. Under our, under Florida statutes and our code, she has certain powers, and she's electing to use all of them at this time to lay that important groundwork. There's also under our code, something called the Emergency Management Council, which consists of the mayor and the members of the council. And we would ask that you all, I don't know if the word ratified is correct, if you're doing it before she signs it, but we'd like to know that you're on board with this as well and that this is a unified effort going forward to give both the manager and the chief of police the full powers authorized under our code and under the governor's emergency declarations that allow, for example, certain procurement rules to be relaxed and other rules, contract rules to be relaxed during the emergency so that nothing hinders an efficient response and the doing of what needs to be done. How's that for without notes?
How long is the emergency through there?
The way we've set this up is it's, she's going to declare it for seven days, but it's renewable by her in seven-day increments. There is some loose language in the statute. It says if the emergency is in a single municipality only, the declaration can be only for seven days. Some cities have just declared emergencies. We got the, Balm Harbor, was it, or Bay Harbor?
Oh, Balm Harbor.
We got Balm Harbors today. They just declared the emergency until further notice. We thought it would be better, all things considered, to do seven days and then see where we are after the end of each week.
Shouldn't we do 30 days?
I don't know. I don't want to, whatever my colleagues say.
My concern is if the statute is deemed applicable, I don't want to be in a position to violate it. So we just kept it as seven days and renewable every week. And again, this is by her signature, so we don't need a meeting in seven days to renew it. She can just, the mayor can just renew it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So Mr. Seraphin, you have certain ideas about restricting public meetings if there is no quorum present. Do you see, have?
Do I have? No, I don't have ideas. There are Attorney General opinions that.
There are. But we know that different cities do that differently. But now we're moving into a point where we may inquire as to what cities are doing if they are unable to have face-to-face public meetings. And so that's a question that I have going forward.
Let me lay it out for you so everyone's on the same page. Florida public records law requires, and the government in the sunshine requires, that we have open public meetings accessible to all. The Florida Attorney General has repeatedly, not once, but I think either two or three times, opined in written opinions that you can have one or two members appear by electronic means, by phone or by Skype, by whatever. And we've done that on occasion in this council, provided that at least a quorum is physically present in the room. And that's been the law for a long time. The technological abilities have gotten so much better over the years. And circumstances like this type of emergency arise from time to time where it would certainly be better, from a practical and governmental standpoint, if you could have meetings completely through technological means, either by Skype or online, or, you know, go to meeting or something like that. There are some practical problems with that. First of all, is the Attorney General opinions and the statute. Jamie Cole of Yaroslav, a couple of weeks ago, wrote a letter to the governor saying, hey, we see this coming. Can you give us some relief in one of your orders and relieve us from this part of the public records, government in the sunshine law, and let us have these meetings? The governor has responded, but has not done it. They're in discussions, and it might yet happen. And if that happens, great. But in addition, you have to make it available to everyone, which is a challenge even with technology. And secondly, the village has been sued for allegedly not having sufficient access for people with disabilities to what we put on our. for people with disabilities to what we put on our website. So I would suggest to you that it's not beyond the realm of imagination that if we put up a link somewhere that says we're doing it electronically, anyone can join and listen. Well, the people who can't listen might have a problem with that. You know, the hearing impaired. And it's, you know, so there's a lot of issues about it. The Wyserota firm has been advising its clients that if you have an emergency, something urgent that absolutely needs to be done, and you can't get a meeting together because of the medical conditions, the coronavirus emergency, they say, you should go ahead and do it, and if you violate the sunshine law, you violate the sunshine law, and maybe it would be voided later and you'd have to do it again. I don't subscribe to that opinion. Yeah, I don't share that opinion. You know, anytime a lawyer says, yeah, in my opinion, you should violate the law. I always get a little squirrely about that. But fortunately, so far, we haven't had that type of an emergency matter come up. If it does, we may have to deal with it, but we'll deal with it based on the state of the law at the time, which may be different from what it is now. But that's my full take on that issue, and I'm happy to discuss it with you off the record if you'd like. Although I probably said too much already.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lefredo.
Are you kind of, I mentioned, I had a brief discussion with the village manager earlier today, and we, there was talk about canceling all non-quasi-judicial board meetings for 60 days or 90 days. Are we gonna do that now?
It's not a part of this declaration, but go ahead, Mr. Manager.
The declaration would give the power to do without a good decision's been made.
Correct.
Right.
We'll find out in a minute.
Yes, ma'am. So obviously, this is a very fluid situation that's going on here right now. It, it changes sometimes from in the morning to lunchtime, there's something news happen. I'm, the way I'm approaching this is I'm following the lead of the Health Department, the CDC, the county, whoever, a, a, all these different agencies. As long as they are recommending that we don't have meetings that involve large groups of people, my opinion, I'm recommending that we cancel those types of meetings, including the council meetings, unless we can somehow satisfy Mr. Seraphin's concerns, you know, of, you know, for participation of, of, of our residents and people that, that wanna participate in our government here. There's, as I said, there's a lot of things happening right now. There are some things happening, perhaps, in planning and zoning, and I haven't looked at the, and code enforcement. I haven't, just haven't had time to look at the upcoming agendas to see what's pending. But things like the education advisory board, recreation advisory, the library board, things like that, I don't see a need to have them meet right now. All those departments are shut down anyway, and if you could allow me, after, at the appropriate time, I'd like to just wrap up with what we're doing or planning.
The other thing I would say is, some of these meetings, if they have to be held, don't necessarily have to be held in this room. We have other facilities that can accommodate more social distancing, and, you know, if it comes to that.
The community center has large rooms where you could establish social distancing.
That's what I was thinking. But we'll take it a day at a time.
Okay.
Well, let me just say this. I'm inclined to agree with the manager on if we need to cancel those quasi-judicial hearings, I mean, meetings, we will. And I feel like we're gonna act in the best interest of the village and the best interest of its residents.
Are we making a decision now, or is it gonna go case by case, point by point?
I'm, I'm making it case by case, point by point, as things change. It's a very fluid situation, but right now, I'm, I'm, as far as the, the, the non-quasi-judicial boards, we've already advised them that we're canceling those meetings.
Okay.
Essentially, what the declaration is doing, and what we would like everyone on board with, is rather than have these things come up before you on an issue-by-issue and potential emergency basis, we're asking you to trust the mayor, trust the manager, trust the chief of police, who together will be making these sort of decisions going forward. Now, I know Tom is committed. If something world-changing needs to be decided, he's going to be consulting you all.
Point, and I'm not a doctor, but I, I, I've been alive for 67 years. I've been a councilman 20 years. Allison, Jonathan, and the mayor know what I'm about to say, but this has never happened before.
Nothing like this has happened in our memory.
And the other thing I wanna say, which is just my own personal opinion, the two weeks are gonna be up, the courts are closed now for two weeks, everything's closed now for two weeks. The virus is still gonna be here at the end of March. It's not going away. And the summer's not coming for another couple of months. So I just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have my consensus to support the mayor and the council and the manager and the police chief, but I just hope everybody's thinking ahead a little bit. I hope people aren't throwing to second when the runner's going to third, as we say in baseball.
Councilman Melz, did you have a comment?
All I was gonna say, I'd like to move the issue, call the question, and in terms of giving the mayor the emergency powers as presented.
Is there a need for me to read this into the record, or can I just sign?
No, it's in, it's in the record. We're gonna put a copy in the, and it'll be posted on the website.
I'll second Mr. Melz's motion.
And this is essentially to ratify the mayor's declaration in your capacity as the Emergency Management Council.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all. It's your right to make it.
Village announcements, please be aware. Event programs and meetings may be canceled or postponed as a preventative measure to COVID-19. Please follow us on social media and the village website to stay updated. Village Council comments.
Should I go first?
Yes, Mr. Lefredo.
Okay, this is something I wanna read into the record. The council's already been aware of it. As my son said, it needs work, Dad. He saw it at 5 o'clock, but I wanna put it in the record for consideration for future action. And it's a memorandum, "Council Comments to Request Consideration For The Establishment Of An Emergency Loan Fund For Businesses On Northeast 2nd Avenue." Dear Mayor and Council, I'm writing to request your consideration for the establishment of an emergency loan fund to benefit the businesses on Northeast 2nd Avenue. The reasons for this request should be obvious. The social and business disruptions during the last weeks, and especially the last five days, have been enormous. They threaten to destroy years of work by the village, the Chamber of Commerce, and civic-minded individuals to create a thriving business district on Northeast 2nd Avenue. The general outline of this proposal is as follows. One, the creation of an emergency loan fund of between $300,000 and $400,000. Two, loan limits of $50,000 each for the two new and large restaurants. Three, loan limits of $20,000 each for the smaller restaurants. Four, loan limits of $10,000 each for other businesses, depending on size. Five, upon approval each applicant, and this will be an application process, will be able to draw one-fifth of their loan amount each month, starting on April 1st, or May 1st, depending if this gets anywhere, and continuing until the loan funds in their account are used up. Six, the loan terms would be at 1% interest payable in a three-year balloon, which means they would pay it at the end. Three, personal guarantees of the proprietor or senior partner would be required. That's so that it would be, this is serious kind of... The loan fund would not be available to national brand businesses. Such businesses should have the financial resources to deal with the emergency, and nobody approached me and asked me to do this. So please keep that in mind if it's inartful. But the idea is to cover rent and loan ca, hard fixed costs for four or five months, to give these people a chance to stay in business. I was here in '07 when we had a thriving business district. It was gone by the end of '09. I just, I just don't wanna see this as a ghost town. The mayor, manager brought up to me, and it's, sent an email that there is a statewide program. I know about the SBA. I don't think that's viable for these businesses, but the state program may be viable. But anyway, I just want council to think about it, that's all.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Mr. Lefredo, do you have copies, do you have copies, copies?
I sent it out to you today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can, I was gonna make some copies and circulate them, but I can't do that.
Can I speak to that real quickly? Because I think this is a good idea in theory, and so I look forward to kinda combing through it a little bit more. But in theory, I see what you're trying to do, and it's something we should look at a little bit more in depthly. Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes. Thank you for bringing this up, and I was very interested in not only the steps that you outlined, but also in the reading of what Governor DeSantis just proposed. That is something new. It's something that I don't think existed before in terms of small business loans, and it is just for one year for those restaurants, a max of $50,000 for just one year. Not every restaurant would wanna avail themselves of it. It's a tender spot for all of us, and I, and I know that all, that we all appreciate how we got here. And I, and in this context, I wanted to mention the pub crawl, which was just last Thursday night. There were $35 per person tickets sold for this. They sold out. There were 70 tickets sold. I don't know exactly how many turned up. It was very cleverly done. We spent 30 minutes at each of five venues. That, everyone worked very hard on it, and it was, it was very well managed by the Chamber of Commerce. A few years ago, when I was mayor, the, the hue and cry to get some restaurants and, and retail in downtown was so strong that I was moved to bring up the idea that we supplement the chamber director's salary, so we could make a good hire and go forward and try to make this magic happen. And now, fast forward to now, when we see the work of these restaurateurs and, and vendors so threatened, that it is something that really tugs at all of us, I'm sure. But I do think that our timing has to be right, and I think we have to be sure that, first of all, it is something that the, that these small number of businesses want, desire. Do they desire a loan? And, and, and secondly, where in our budget the, the money might come from. So I, I'm so glad that you wanna take it under advisement, because that's the way I'd like to see it after just reading it today. And, and I know that, that, that our, our people that have come to our town to open these establishments are very clever indeed. And I can see some of them who've already participated in a number of village events outside their establishment and tried to donate their time and staff to make our events successful. So I'm anticipating even more of that, that ability, and let's see where it falls out in a few weeks. It's my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Melz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would suggest as a bridge that we encourage the businesses to work within the framework and the new regulations as far as their operations and do delivery. Maybe if we can promote that or, or encourage our, our neighbors and friends to order and frequent. I know there, and if you were a frequent customer to the farmer's market, the bakery, I think they're a husband and wife, or a couple, they went on to Facebook and now are doing deliveries for free in the shores daily. They're baking, and they're, they're delivering to the, to the homes, and it's fantastic to be able to support them. And maybe we could do the same, which is something, this is immediate, and it's no cost to the village government or to the reserves, but we are pushing that, that the restaurants, if they're willing, and if they want to, that they can deliver. I know there's another family, a local catering company, which is now delivering solely to, to residents because their catering business is, is obviously evaporated. So maybe we can do something to help them immediately, and, and then, you know, this comes up at some other point where we're more able to engage and discuss. But maybe our social media director or specialist can help with that. I don't know. But maybe we'll leave that to staff and maybe reach out and see if the, the businesses even want to, want us to help them participate in that.
Thank you, and I concur that whatever we can do to help our local businesses here, because we're on the precipice of something great, we should be inclined to do. I think the idea of social media and delivery is one thing, and I think what Mr. Lefredo is proposing is quite another. But any way we can assist them going forward in these times, we should all collectively put our heads together and, and help to try to figure that out. I'm gonna defer to the manager in a second, but I do wanna put out a little bit of information for those of you watching. The manager and I have been privy, or have been part of, conference calls with the county mayor over the last couple of weeks. And so anything we're doing, and he's mentioned this earlier, we are sort of following that protocol of Mayor Jimenez, and he is therefore following the, the order of the state. So I just wanna give out a little bit of information, what we've been finding out. And this last meeting we had was, I believe, Monday, the conference call?
Yes.
It was Monday. So just wanna let everyone know that the county is working with Jackson Memorial Health System to provide additional testing sites, and they are hoping to have mobile units up and running in short order. I don't wanna give a date, but we're hoping for the end of the week. And this also includes drive-up testing sites. And as soon as we have this information, we will be sure to pass along testing sites and locations to you all on our social media sites. If you are seeking additional information, please go to cdc.org or call the Florida Department of Health at 850-815-4940. The Florida Department of Health also has launched a COVID-19 dashboard that will be updated twice daily with COVID-19 cases in Florida, and it will be going by county by county. Individuals in Miami-Dade County who believe they may have been exposed to COVID-19 should call the Florida Department of Health at 305-324-2400. If you have a medical provider, please call them. If you're traveling to a medical office or facility, call ahead. For questions about COVID-19 in Florida, please call the Florida Department of Health at 866-779-6121. And for a medical emergency, of course, please dial 911. I'm gonna turn it over to you for a little bit, Mr. Manager, just to talk about what closures we have, what, how we are going forward in the next couple of weeks, so that everybody's well informed of what we're doing. Thank you.
So as we've all been talking about tonight, this is a very fluid situation we're in. We're in completely uncharted waters. We've never been involved in something like this before as a, as a nation, to my knowledge, as far as a pandemic like this. And so we're having to, to do things on the fly and often by the seat of our pants. So far, we've been, I, I think we've, our staff has really rose to the occasion, has done an excellent job in adapting. Right now, effective today, the, the latest thing that we put into place was closing a village hall. So right now, the only services that we're providing here at Village Hall are, are still through our, our building department, and we're asking everybody to enter through our old police station. Those of you that have been here for a while know that the police station used to be on, on the same building, and you entered on the south side of 100th Street. There's a small lobby area in there. We're allowing two people at a time in there. Our staff is behind an enclosed glass area, so they're protected from patrons, and there's a little slot in there that contractors can put their plans through, and we can keep the building department open. I think it's very important that we keep, as long as the governor and the mayor of Dade County are allowing construction to continue, I think it's very important for us to keep that essential service open for the sake of the economy and for all the people out there, residents that could be in the middle of a construction project and maybe living somewhere off-site and need to get back home and wanna get back home. I previously advised the council that the library, the rec department, aquatics facility have all been shut down effective last week. We were considering opening the pool because CDC told us that the chlorine will kill the virus, but with that being the only thing open, chances are we could have, you know, a couple hundred people there, and we'd be right back in the same position. So the pool is not opening, and it's gonna remain closed. The country club closed down today, with the exception of golf. That's a, a decision by PCM, the operators of our country club. At the present time, they're gonna continue with golf, but there's no restaurant or bar service available there. We are also allowing tennis to stay open at our tennis court. We only have four courts. Tennis players typically don't congregate. They're far enough apart. It's out in the open, obviously, so we're, we're allowing tennis to stay open. As things, more information becomes available, and if we need to clamp down more, the village administration is going to respond. I will let you know of actions that we take, but sometimes we have to do things rather quickly. quickly. As soon as I am able to get ahold of you all and get the information out, of course I will. As far as police services go, we're, we're responding as, as normal, with the exception of we are currently allowing people in the lobby. That may change, because we certainly don't want that group of first responders infected, so we've got to keep the, the police going. I believe the chief has moved to having roll calls in their respective cars, so they don't have to come into the station and sit in a close proximity in the squad room there, so he'll be doing that. We're going to be tapering off on responding to all medical calls. We will only respond to medical calls that involve shortness of breath, heart attacks, bleeding, blunt force trauma, things like that. Right now, when somebody calls the police for anything, a police car will go out there, and oftentimes, we're there before EMS, and so they have the proper gear, our officers don't, in some cases. So the chief is looking into that, into those protocols to see when he's got to pull the trigger on that and, and back off some of those calls. Again, we don't know what the future's going to hold. You listen to the health experts, and it's going to get worse before it gets better. So I would just ask everybody to bear with us. We're going to do the best we can with, with the cards that were dealt here to make sure that everybody stays as safe as, as they can. And obviously, the whole purpose of this is to flatten out that curve so that we don't continue on the upward spike of outbreaks and, and additional cases of the virus. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
So you mentioned construction, so does that mean construction on the pool will continue?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. Do we have, have we captured residents' email addresses? Have we ever done email blasts to our residents? And forgive me for ignorance, but I'm not sure. Okay. Is that something?
The technology that we have is, is not that great. We're, we're working on it. It takes a long time to put out a blast, so sometimes when, when you push send, it could take sometimes over an hour to get everybody's, to get everything out there. But we, we have some capability to do that, yes.
Okay.
We don't have everybody's. We ask people to sign up, but not everybody's done that.
Well, maybe with the data we have, we should consider, I know it may take some time, but we might consider sending out a blast with relevant information. I know we're distributing on social media, but I've heard some concerns that it's easier for some folks to get it via email. So it's just a thought that we should consider, and it might reach a larger breadth of people or people who are not being reached currently.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I want to mention that.
Go ahead.
Your video that you did, I know a lot of people saw that, but it would be great to be able to email it. It, it's, it's something people look forward to. That information, as you all say, is changing so rapidly that it would be good if you were able to do a few more of those during this time and get them blasted some.
So, so that's the inclination, is to do more as we go along, as we collect information. I do agree with you, to keep them as formed as, as possible. My second question is, in, in having great concern for our elderly population, our older population here in Miami Shores, I know we have a significant number of folks living here, I'm wondering, do we have those numbers handy? I mean, do we, have we collected data on who's living here in terms of our aging population?
No, ma'am.
We don't have that information?
We don't have a database on any particular age group.
Okay.
Well, but.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
The, the community center is working on a database of the people who have signed up for some of the programs, like the OSHA lifelong learning. Those people are beginning to be part of a database, but, and they're, it's small. I know, it's small, but we're going in the right direction there.
Mr. Lefredo?
Yeah, with regard to emailing, would it be possible for you to authorize some overtime and have the media person come in and do it in the evening? Because emails usually, you know, they'll get it the next day.
Sure, we can, we're going to work on this in the first thing in the morning. We'll work something out.
Mr. Melz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tom, I'm sorry, did, did you mention sanitation and recycling yet?
I did not. Those, those services are going to, that's considered an essential service, so public works will, will stay operational. Obviously, if you don't pick the garbage and trash up, then you have a whole nother health issue and a whole nother set of problems. So that is an essential service that we are going to keep operating.
And I would, I would just also chime in that since this is a fluid situation and things are changing day to day, I know we're collecting a lot of data and getting it out, but I think it's the appetite of the community that we are providing them with what we're hearing as quickly as we can and as often as we can, and that, that would be my push to, one, get stuff out on social media as much as possible, but we can get the emails out. The reason I say that is because it's such a fluid situation, and keeping people updated, I think, is the utmost priority. Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, well, so, well, you're getting.
Peripheral.
I would, I would like to say that, that there is a certain element of sort of Miami Shores branding on the message that people like, and that's what your video did. You might have been saying some of the same things as county leadership, but you were putting our, our brand on it. You're our people, so I think people do appreciate that, and would, I'd like us to overcome whatever obstacles to that we could, you know, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? One more thing, Mr. Manager, just for clarification, so that everybody has clarification on what's going on with our restaurants. Just want to make sure everybody understands that it's coming down from the county, and what is, how are we proceeding going forward?
The county mayor has signed an emergency order saying that all restaurants are to close effective 11:00 PM tonight until further notice.
And bars.
Bars is, of course, as I said, the country club is our host.
Bars, restaurants, gyms, a whole list of places.
Right, and pretty much anywhere where there's a, a large volume of people congregating.
Not pharmacies, not grocery stores.
Right, not gas stations. The airport's open, the airport, restaurants are open.
Hospital restaurants are open.
Right, things like that. But, but around here, for us, pretty much, the Northeast Second Avenue restaurants, the country club are all going to be closed. In fact, I've heard, I think, sins is closed already. Churches are still open.
They're still open.
Right.
They have to, well, I would argue.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware about what was going on locally here as it relates to the shores.
Now, I know at least one of our churches has indicated that they're going to go, they're, they're going to start essentially live streaming, and I think you're going to see them encouraging their congregation to stay home, but I, I don't know that for a fact yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we'll continue to keep everybody informed as early and as often as possible. Oh, one last question, I'm sorry, I know you just sat down. We don't have any confirmed cases here in Miami Shores Village that you know of?
We do not. Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there being, there being no further business in the Village of Miami Shores, this village, I mean, this meeting is therefore adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.